Good evening and Happy New Year. This is the Selectmen's Meeting of Monday, January 9, 2017. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the audience recording? Our representative from the Telegrammer Gazette. Being no others, we stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have no public comments. Nobody's signed up, so we'll move right along here. We have no presentations or public hearings tonight. Communications, we have none. Under the Board of Selectmen General Items, we have a one-day beer and wine license for Auburn Youth and Family Services, Dancing with the Stars fundraising event, 2017, 444 Washington Street in Auburn. Is there somebody here to speak on that tonight? Would you please come forward, just introduce yourself? Yeah, you come up and visit us here. Thank you.
I'm Maureen Kennedy, and I'm here representing Auburn Youth and Family Services. And we've applied for a one-day beer and wine license for January 28.
And that is a snow date, which we never know what you're gonna have for February 4, 2017. And it's gonna be the same program we've had from years past?
Yes, it is, exactly.
Great. Anybody got any questions? Yeah, I saw some videos of last year's, and it's quite the thing to take in. I think I may even show up this year.
Well, we have a very special dancer this year, too.
Well, it won't be me, because I-
Lionel Berthew.
Oh, there you go.
Yes.
Oh, the word is out, Lionel.
No doubt.
Is there any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Brotherton.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state and town in any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and where the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license. Maureen, you are aware of the DCG?
Yes, they met the other day. Sally DeCangelo did.
Okay, very good. I'd like to make that a motion, and I wish them the best of luck.
Great. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Mrs. Kennedy, have you got anything else?
Would you like to know some of the dances? Usually, in the past, I've told you who's dancing.
You know what? We're willing to hear them.
Okay. We have Brett Jacobson, who's a custom service manager for Mastermans. We have Donovan Byron, who works for Midstate. Gary Sedrone, he's very involved with youth sports here in town, and he works with Bank of America. We have Mike Lavelle, the assistant principal at Swanson Road. We have Rick Nicholson, who's an Auburn fire fighter and EMT. We have Steve Brodus, who is the guidance counselor at the high school. We have Ziad Aneer, he's the owner of the Route 20 Shell Station. And Chris Raymond, who's an Auburn police officer.
Great.
And then we have, last but not least, Lionel Berthew, past Selectman.
Be sure you wear your dancing slippers and not your boots.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye?
Thank you.
Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a drain layers license for Gustafson Plumbers in Worcester. We have all our documents in front of us. Is there any questions? I'm just waiting to see if Dan's got anything over there.
I'm disorganized in the papers. No, everything looks good to me.
Okay. Well, if being no questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failed to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have gift acceptances tonight. From the Fire Rescue Department, we have $1,000 from Mastermans, and that'll go to their gift account.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And from the Police Department, $660 from the Crawley family.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And for the Town of Auburn, $45 total. One for Melinda A. Webster.
It's Webster Loof.
A big pardon?
Webster Loof.
Webster Loof, okay. And that's for $20 for the Pappas Complex in memory of Chris Engel.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And then $25 for Laura Nastro. Pappas Complex in memory of Chris Engel.
Motion to accept with gratitude, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have proclamation here, a request for Eagle Scout proclamation from the Assistant Scoutmaster of Troop 53, Brian Luznisky, on behalf of Cameron Ganong, who will be presented his Eagle rank in the Boy Scouts of America. And we have received a letter from Mr. Zalinski, and I hope that's the way I pronounce it. And it will fall in line with our new policy of proclamations. It is an award for Boy Scouts.
Do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I'd make a motion that the board recognize Mr. Ganong as an Eagle Scout. He did do the project. His project was collecting old bikes. He refurbished them and gave them out to needy children, ranging from preschoolers to teenagers for Auburn Youth and Family at the Town of Auburn. Each youth received a bike, bike helmet, safety, bike book, and bike safety course free of charge. There were over 70 youths who received a bike, so that is quite tremendous.
Certainly is. I'll second that motion. Job well done, absolutely. So the motion's been made, and there's a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Are we expecting Mrs. Goodrich shortly?
I believe she said she thought she would be coming from another meeting between 7:10 and 7:15. So through the chair, if I could recommend, potentially, if you want to take up items six-
Here she is now. This is awesome. Let her get in, get settled in, and then we'll move right along into our next. Thank you. Now, you're Mr. Goodrich?
I'm excellent. How are you?
Good. Okay. We have already gone through a few of the agenda items tonight. We are on the petition to amend the Town of Auburn zoning bylaws for digital billboards in the Regional Mall Overlay District. And we have representatives here to speak on that tonight. And if you would like to come up and join us here at the table, I believe we have room for a third chair over there. Do we not?
Uh, might be a little-
Fine, great. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, I want to just introduce Attorney Robert Longden. And I'll have him introduce his team, who's here this evening. And just by way of background, the members have a letter in their packet from Christopher Macurio, who is from Boddichandui, a colleague of Mr. Longden's. And the overall reason that we're here this evening is that the petitioner, which is Auburn Mall, working in conjunction with Total Outdoor Advertising, is proposing an amendment to the zoning bylaw for the Regional Mall Overlay District to allow for billboards. This process follows the process that we've done fairly recently with quite a few zoning bylaws. We can go through that after, but just a reminder, it falls under Chapter 48, Section 5. And there's an entire process listed under Mass. General Law that provides for an amendment to be proposed to a bylaw. So this evening, what you have before you is a petition for such an amendment. And under Mass. General Law, the board has 14 days to pass this along to the planning board. If at all possible, I would recommend that you pass it along this evening, if you're comfortable, to get that process started, because the planning board is actually the body that then starts with the public hearings and the whole process, which ultimately will end up with a recommendation, either for or against, from the planning board on the town meeting. So that's basically the process. You could wait until your next meeting in January, but then that really condenses the timeline that the planning board has to do their work. So we would recommend that you would transmit it. And this evening, I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Longden and his team, and they're going to explain to you what the bylaw is and why they're proposing it and what the reason is for it. So, thank you. Thanks for the-
Please. Thank you very much. Welcome, Senator Manager. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure to be here. I'm Robert Longden. I'm an attorney at law firm of Boddichandui in Worcester. And I represent the mall at Auburn LLC, which is the Auburn Mall, as well as Total Outdoor Advertising, which has been, as mentioned, involved in this particular proposal. With me is Drew Hoffman, the Executive Vice President of Total Outdoor, and also my colleague, Chris Macurio, attorney with our firm. What we're proposing is an amendment to the bylaw that would allow two double-faced digital billboard signs to be constructed and maintained at the Auburn Mall, at the rear of the mall, behind the building, closest to the embankment where the Mass Pike is located at the rear of the mall, in order to provide advertising, excuse me, two vehicles on the Massachusetts Turnpike. As I said, these would be two double-faced signs, digital signs, meaning that each, there'll be two sign structures, and each one will have two, what are called, faces on them in a V-shaped formation at the top of the structure, so that it'd be visible from both directions on the Mass Pike. And I'll let Drew explain where they will be located and how they would be viewed and the technology. Frankly, modern technology, this is the first time this technology is being used in the state that greatly reduces any impacts from the visualization of these billboard signs at this particular location. In conjunction with the proposal, again, it is for two billboard signs to be located within the Regional Mall Overlay District, so that these billboard signs cannot be located elsewhere within the town. They can only be located within the Regional Mall Overlay District, which, as we know, is confined to the Auburn Mall. So it is site-specific. It was strategically decided to focus on a site next to the Mass Pike, but also at the rear of the mall, so it absolutely minimizes the visual impacts from these signs at this particular location and lets them do what they're supposed to do, which is provide advertising messages to vehicles on the Mass Pike. In conjunction with this proposal, if in fact the town is receptive to it, if the town approves both the amendment to the zoning bylaw to allow us to go forward, which contemplates also that these signs would have to go through site plan approval with the planning board. And then we would also have to go through the State Outdoor Advertising Board to obtain permits from the state for outdoor advertising signs at this particular location. If all those approvals and permits can be obtained, and if in fact these signs can be constructed, then the Total Outdoor Advertising is proposing making voluntary donations to the Town of Auburn in the amount of $25,000 per structure, meaning one structure has two signs on it, double-faced, as I said. $25,000 per year per structure, meaning a total of $50,000 a year for 20 years, which is $1 million. And the first five years' payments would be accelerated to be paid in a lump sum once the signs are operable. So that lump sum would be $250,000, again payable once the signs are operable. In addition to that, Total Outdoor Advertising, on these four faces, these four signs that will be constructed at the Auburn Mall, will provide free notification usage for the town to publish public notices on these signs in the event of emergencies, amber alerts, things of that nature, as well as civic announcements. And in addition to that, will provide the town, as a donation, a standalone mobile digital sign that can be located wherever the town wants to throughout the town, that can be also used to provide public service announcements, emergency announcements, anything that the town chooses to use the sign and that particular venue for, as far as providing information throughout the town. The donations, the cash donations that I've mentioned, are exactly that, voluntary donations. They are not impact fees being paid to the town. They come with no restrictions as to how that money can be spent, so it's totally up to the town how those donations would be applied, and leaving it to the wisdom of the town as to how those monies might be spent. So that essentially is our proposal, but I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Hoffman to explain to you the technology that would be used at these signs and the measures that are being taken to minimize negative impacts on the town.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. Thank you very much for seeing us tonight. My name is Drew Hoffman. And as Bob said, I'm the Executive Vice President for Total Outdoor. Our company has been in business for almost 10 years. My senior managers, or my partners, are former senior managers from Accrily Communications. And collectively, we have over 100 years of outdoor advertising experience. So we're not new to the business. The signs we're proposing on the property will be located, as Bob said, behind the Auburn Mall. One of them would be behind, directly behind the mall. The other one would be 1,100 feet west of that current sign, because state regulations require that we have a minimum of 1,000 feet between digital signs. So we're going about 1,100 feet to the west, which puts us somewhere around just east of the Sears Auto Center. The technology we will be using would be similar to this device here, which is from Media Resources. This device will have what's called Sightline Technology. Sightline Technology allows for selected viewing. So it will read only to the turnpike. So the sign will be angled by 30 degrees to the turnpike. Anyone from 30 degrees in this direction would only see a dark space. They would not see any light emitting from the sign. There won't be any lights other than facing the turnpike. It also has a horizontal louver across, so it's not gonna emit any halo effect either. So it's only to the turnpike. As I came out tonight, there's a new billboard just east of 495. You can see one right there. There's also another one here in the Town of Auburn, heading west, going in. There's another digital sign there. That particular billboard does not have the Sightline Technology that this does, because we want to be mindful to any neighbors and residents on-
Packerchog.
Packerchog Street. So given that, we're gonna use the new technology. And if you have any questions, we'll then have to answer them for you.
Any questions? One. Mr. Carpenter.
I just have a couple of questions. In your packet, you have two residents, both on Mariana Ave. And I see, top of frame, are you suggesting that they won't be able to see any images?
Which page you working with?
It doesn't have page numbers, Mr. Chairman, but it's in the last third, I would say.
Yeah, so you can see that the sign, you can only see, what they're gonna see is this angle from this direction. So they will not be able to see the face.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Thank you.
Walk that way back.
And the only other question, I understand is a voluntary donation, but I was wondering if the group would be willing to put in an inflation factor in, in that we're getting this over 20 years? Potentially, you know, $1 million today doesn't pay what it does three years from now. Would you consider including that in the packet?
I can discuss it with my partner, sure. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Oh, sir. I guess my question is that, this sounds like a great idea, I mean, especially when it becomes, you know, useful for civic announcements.
Right.
And I think it's great for the Auburn Mall. I think it's great for the town. I think it's gonna be a great thing all the way around. How are they maintained?
They're actually maintained on an annual basis. And if something is malfunctioning with the sign, it will send a signal and reroute all the components to tell us that there's a problem. And we'll send somebody out within 48 hours. But the sign could, we could control the sign to go dark if there's an extreme problem.
Okay. And what is the mounting? Is it, you know, is it, there's not gonna be a problem with mounting, you know, to the ground, so it's not gonna come over? It's, you know, it's gonna be-
No, so it's a monopole structure. The monopole itself would be between 42 and 48 inches wide. I'll leave that up to the engineers to figure out once we do a soil test. But the physical sign will be mounted to the top, and have never had a problem ever them coming down.
Like I say, you know, sometimes that could be a wind tunnel there, and, you know, with the storms or what have you. You know, just wanna be sure that it's-
They're all constructed to the-
Suitable design.
-current codes for wind loads, et cetera. So absolutely, it'll be safe.
Great. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question, and it's regarding the applicant. And I guess it's for the attorney. Mall at Auburn LLC, I haven't heard that. It's always been related to Simon Properties or whatever, just could you-
It's a separate entity that owns the real estate on which the Auburn Mall is situated.
Okay. And that's just regarding this piece of property?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Berthew.
So behind the mall is a fence, and then there's the big embankment to the Mass Pike. Will the structure be on the parking lot side of the fence or on the other side of the fence?
Parking lot will have to be on the parking lot side of the fence, because we obviously don't encroach on the Mass State right-of-way.
Okay, and so, and it's already been checked out for emergency vehicles, and no, there's not a lot of room back there.
Right, right. So we've found an area that has a loading dock in the back area there. So we're gonna be off inset in that loading area. So the fire lane there, I think, is a 30-foot setback. So we're gonna be well outside of that setback.
Mr. Chairman, if the members are, I just wanna add two things to this. Number one, it is an opportunity for, if it goes through the planning board process and goes through town meeting, it's, and they recognize that the impacts are minimal to none on the residents, which is something that we've been, we just wanna make sure there are no impacts on the residents. That was our number-one concern. But we also are concerned and obviously always willing to support proposals wherein the mall can find alternate revenue sources. And I just wanna point out that, you know, some people have said, "Well, why are they doing this? Why are any of the malls across the country looking to do something outside of just the traditional retail tenant agreements?" Because they need to generate revenues. So such as the mall worked at a theater. They're now looking at the proposal for medical office space. This would provide a revenue stream for the mall that would help keep them viable. They are our largest taxpayer and our largest employer. So as long as there are no impacts on the town, this would be a wonderful opportunity for the mall to generate additional sources of revenue and solidify their financial standing here. Second, the donation to the town, we can absolutely discuss it. Just wanna remind the board that we have been in the process of putting together a Drury Square Visioning Plan. And we received a $10,000 grant from the state. We started this process maybe six or seven months ago. And we're about to finalize the Drury Square Strategy Plan. And there are a number of strategies in that plan that these donated funds could go toward to help enhance Drury Square as a vital center of town. The whole grant was to try to create and enhance Drury Square as a downtown area. And again, with input from many, many residents who participated in a public process, there are some really interesting ideas for signage and banners and opportunities to enhance the Goddard Park there, to fix the fountain. There are a lot of things that we potentially could do. It's a subject to be taken up if this goes forward. We certainly have plenty of time, but I just wanna remind the board there are some very good things that we could put this money toward in the same area as the mall that have been identified, both through town administration and through the residents, as being something that they'd really like to see done. So I just wanted to remind them.
I'd agree with that. I just, I think that something like this is gonna be great to the mall. And then whatever funds we can expend to the area around the mall will just enhance that area even more so. So I think it's a win-win for the town. I think it's gonna be great, and it's not gonna be just strictly commercial. It's gonna be able to be, the town will be able to use a portion of that sign for whatever our needs are, too. So it's definitely a great thing. And I would support sending this along to the planning board, and I would support sending a letter to the planning board with our support. Mrs. Brotherton.
Through the chair, who determines the signage that will be on these billboards?
Oh, the advertising?
Yes.
We have a local sales force, and we have a national sales force. One of the things that we cannot advertise, because it's been regulated out, is tobacco. So tobacco advertising will not be permitted. The other thing we don't permit is anything that would be of adult entertainment, would not be included. Alcohol and beer is allowed. So if we have a national advertiser with a beer interest, then we would propose a beer advertiser on the sign. But we're not out there actively pitching to the adult entertainment industry, so.
So this just doesn't pertain to state issues like amber alerts or weather conditions?
So the state will take over.
Integrate.
Good question. In an amber alert case, the state takes over all the digital signs.
Okay.
The state also requires that we provide them 15 hours of public services messaging on every structure that we have, every sign, every digital face. So we provide 15 hours of public service messaging to the state as well.
Excuse me, is that annually?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Monthly, 15 hours a month. Yeah. Yep. And again, in addition, if there's an amber alert, they'll take over all the signs, every one the state has.
So if a vendor, if a restaurant, let's say in Auburn, would they have the opportunity to advertise?
Absolutely, yeah.
So this would open for PR for any of our commercial properties in the town?
So our local seller would canvas the area for potential local clients of interest to be on that sign.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carpenter.
Just a quick question. Are there any gonna be parking spaces lost? Especially, I'm thinking, obviously not the east one, which is behind the mall, but the one over by Sears Auto. Are we gonna lose some parking over there?
One spot.
One spot. And if I can, Mr. Chairman, because I see the building inspector is here. Can he just run us through how he would permit this process?
As far as permitting would go, if the bylaw was moved forward and the planning board, and it went to town meeting, was accepted, it would be permitted through site plan approval. So the planning board would have oversight of all the parking and the construction. Then it would go to my office for building permit.
Okay. Thank you. And there are no special requirements for, I mean, is it 100 feet in the air? I'm assuming it's set on a pole. Any sort of failure, any sort of securing on the property?
All that would be structurally looked at by the engineers and have to be stamped and approved.
Okay. Thank you.
There are quite a few regulations through Mass DOT as far as separation of the signs, and they're more than meeting those.
Very good. Very good, thank you.
See, we have the questions, okay? Have you got anything else?
No, I was going to make a motion. I'll wait for...
Oh, okay, have you got anything else?
Unless there's any questions, I'd be happy to...
Okay, Mr. Mercurio, have you got... Great, okay, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we transmit the draft zoning bylaw amendment to the planning board for review and public hearing per Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Do we also want to add our support to it or a letter?
We can do that, we can send that along, send a letter of support from the board if you want to add that to the motion. Mrs. Goodrich?
Okay, sure, do we want that included in the motion or a separate motion?
You could amend your motion to include that, or you could do a separate motion to send a letter of recommendation along with the transmission. But I'd probably say two motions may be cleaner.
I think I prefer...
All right, well, then that's what we'll do, so we'll make the motion for this to transmit the draft zoning bylaw amendment to the planning board. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, that the Board of Selectmen send a letter to the planning board showing its support for this recommended zoning bylaw amendment. Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Sharon, have you got that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to send a letter. Is there any questions? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
We move it along, thank you very much, and thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck with the project.
Thank you, we will be in touch notifying you of the public hearing dates and all.
Thank you, thank you, good night. Okay, next we have on the agenda, vote to set a hearing on the alleged violations of the second-hand dealer's license, Adams Estate Jewelry. This was from last year when there was a communication breakdown and the proper people weren't notified, so we wanted to set up another hearing for the alleged violations of that Adams Estate Jewelry. And we are planning on recommending that schedule to be January 23rd. Mrs. Goodrich?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we schedule a hearing on Monday, January 23rd for an alleged violation of a second-hand dealer's license at Adams Estate Jewelry with notification being made by the Auburn Police and also by certified mail.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for the hearing to be on January 23rd at, you say at 7:05?
Sure, 7:05.
7:05, okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay. This next agenda item is vote to designate a board liaison to the Dog Park Committee. It was brought to my attention tonight by Mrs. Goodrich that we did not have a liaison to the Dog Park Committee. It was made on the first time in the discussion, and then it was not mentioned the second time, so we want to bring it to the board and see what the wishes of the board to have a liaison for the Board of Selectmen are to not, and let the committee run its course. Mrs. Goodrich?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a comment that I did, you know, as a resident attend the first organizational meeting of the Dog Park Committee, and they have great members on it, and I have great confidence in the work they're about to undertake and provide information back to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so you're saying that you'd owe the committee to run on its own without a liaison of the board?
So, you know, I'm happy either way, I mean, I know when we first talked about it, we recommended a liaison, and I offered, and I believe another member offered to serve as a liaison, and then in the second, excuse me, the second vote, we, you know, when we formed the committee, we didn't designate a Board of Selectmen liaison, so whatever the committee's comfortable with, the board is comfortable with.
How many are on the board now?
There are seven, yes.
Through the chair, if it helps you.
Yes.
The next meeting has, actually was just posted today for Wednesday, January 18th at 6:00 PM. The committee at their first meeting discussed that Wednesdays would be good for them. We believe, we've provided them with a schedule of available meetings, meeting rooms, so the planning board room is available the first and third Wednesday of every month, so we have provided that information to them. At their next meeting, they'll be discussing how often they'll meet. There was some discussion by the committee that once a month may not be enough to move this process along in order to get a recommendation to you by Mayor June, so the committee may be meeting, at least initially, on the first and third Wednesday of the month, and then maybe taper it off to once a month. That has not been determined yet, but there has been a lot of discussion about twice a month, so I want to bring that to your attention, it would be Wednesday evenings at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
It will, at some point, the finance committee will start meeting at the same time on Wednesdays in this room at 7:00, but there shouldn't, you know, obviously there won't be any conflict with members.
So already had the discussion by the board? Do you wish to have a liaison, or shall we let the committee run its course? Mr. Carpenter?
For myself, I think the committee is more than capable of giving us a recommendation. We would be a non-voting member, I feel that we should allow them to respect the distance, let them do their work, and then, I don't necessarily feel that one of us would necessarily add to the process. I think it's, you know, I think it's better that the committee work, do its work, and then come to us.
Okay, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I would make a motion that the board allow the Dog Park Committee to continue without a liaison from the Board of Selectmen being present.
Second. Okay, is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we have a special town meeting coming up, and I will turn it over to Ms. Jacobson to explain a little bit about what the special town meeting is going to be.
Thank you. Through the chair, if you'll look at your packet at item 5B, excuse me, I can't read, 5H?
Five, yeah, it's five.
That's an H. It is a letter from school superintendent Marielle Brunel to the Board of Selectmen requesting a consideration for a special town meeting. As you likely know and recall, the school superintendent has come to the board on a couple vacations and just given you updates on the project that's going on at the Paket Chalk School, and it's their roof replacement, and it's through the accelerated repair program. The accelerated repair program will likely be getting their final approvals from the state, I would say, in February at the board meeting of the MSBA, but the owner's project, the OPM, owner's project manager, has recommended that in order to get this project done for the summer of 2017, that the bids really ought to be going out by February and try to get ahead of the construction season and secure a contractor who's ready and able to start once school gets out, so we eliminate any concern of the school being open at that time. In order to do that, rather than waiting until the annual town meeting, we need to have a special town meeting which will provide the appropriation for the funds to do this. Again, this is a project that has been discussed, it has received both school committee and board support for the application process, and while we don't have the final amount, by putting the bids out in February, by the time we go to the town meeting, which we're proposing to have the special town meeting on March 28th, the thought was that we would actually have the actual bid amount at that time, rather than making an estimate of the bid amount, we'd have, we would know what it was. So that is the request. We would like to request that the board schedule this meeting for Tuesday, March 28th. We believe we should put March 29th as a backup date for two reasons. One, should there not be a quorum, which we hope that's not the case, but just in case, and two, should there be any kind of weather incident in March, we want to make sure that we have a date already planned out. In conjunction with this, if we do this, then the next two votes on your agenda would be to open the warrant, which we would recommend opening for tomorrow, and closing it on Thursday, January 19th, which would allow us the opportunity to take any items that may be submitted to us, I don't know that we would get any others, but, and bring them to the board, back to you on the 23rd of January at your next meeting, for you to pass along to Town Council for review. So that's the schedule.
The only thing, I think we discussed when we were setting the agenda, that we talked about any other items that there, any more articles that there might be on the town meeting warrant. Have the department heads been notified of anything that may be, they would want to generate an article for?
Through the chair, I did send out an email to all the department and division heads last week to give you my heads up that this was coming, that it was on your agenda for this evening, we didn't, until you actually take the vote to have the town meeting, we had not gone forward beyond that, but in anticipation of you considering it tonight, we did let the division and department heads know and to let their board and committee members know as they start meeting with them that there is an opportunity here, if there are any warrant articles that they would like to put on in March versus waiting until May. And we are providing a larger window than we're actually required to do, just to give everyone that extra chance to put something in. So by closing it on Thursday, January 19th, that gives us, you know, about 10 days.
Okay.
An early notification was sent out, I think, last Wednesday or Tuesday I sent it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Carpenter?
I just have one request, because I know next Monday is a holiday, and a lot of the committees will be meeting, well, say, I know, planning will probably meet tomorrow, and then conservation, if we could push it off to the 26th. That way, if anybody, even residents, because obviously it might be hard for residents to get here during the regular business day, if we could at least give them a Monday if they wanted to put something on. I know in the past, we've had some streets and whatnot that people are interested in getting considered. That would still give us, looks like a significant window for council to look at.
So your, what is your suggestion?
I would say the 26th, I'd just push it back a week because Monday is a holiday, so if somebody...
So you go and say, instead of Thursday, January 19th, it would be Thursday, January 26th?
Exactly.
Okay, I want to check with town manager, be sure we have enough time, and then that would work sufficiently.
Do you want to mail it to... Through the chair, I'm sorry, we're just looking at...
That's okay, that's fine, that's what we're looking for.
There wasn't that many hours in the mail. So, through the chair, the reason we put it on the 20th is to get it, to allow us on the 21st to post it, which is on Friday, to post it for your Monday, the 23rd meeting, which would give you an opportunity to look at it and approve the warrant, subject to Town Council. If you don't, if we push it to the 26th, let's see, the next, your next board meeting would be February 13th.
Okay, so...
So unless you wanted to meet on the 5th Monday, which would be January 30th, you could put it on the 13th, and assuming there won't be a lot of articles, because usually on a special time meeting, we really are not, it wouldn't be a lot for Town Council and the moderator to review, but we do need their review prior to it for a special time meeting. We have to do the mailing two weeks before, and we like to give it a little extra window just in case, so we need to get it mailed in the mail by the 10th, so the preparation for that, let's say the 8th, you know, give us two days, 8th, 9th, so that should provide enough of a window.
That should, for any of the boards, committees, and the department heads to put anything on that...
Yeah, through the chair, that would definitely give them, it gives them a much longer window than they usually have, especially not expecting a special time meeting. I was more concerned about the board and what your schedule is coming back on the 13th. But if, let's assume you come back on the 13th, and you're ready to approve it at that point, and there should only be a couple articles.
Right.
That should be okay.
Okay, well, then I guess we're going to take those one at a time. The first one, vote to set the date for a special town meeting on Tuesday, March 28th, 2017, at 7 o'clock, with an alternate of Wednesday, March 29th, 2017, for quorum or weather-related items. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we call a special town meeting with a date of Tuesday, March 28th, 2017, at 7:00 PM, with an alternate date of Wednesday, March 29th, 2017.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The next one, we want to open the warrant, and we recommend we open the warrant tomorrow, that's Tuesday, January 10th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the warrant on Tuesday, January 10th.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for opening for Tuesday, January 10th. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And to close the warrant, we're recommending closing on Thursday, January 19th, as the town manager recommended, that we would give them plenty of window to close the warrant and then get it back to us so that we could make those recommendations and pass that along to town meeting members.
Through the chair, I think we were just talking about the, I'm sorry, the 26th, moving it to the 26th?
Move it to the 26th, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to close the warrant on Thursday, January 26th at 4:00 PM.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded for Thursday, January 26th at 4:00 PM to close the warrant. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, to the town manager items, vote to send a letter of support to the youth opioid prevention grant as submitted by the school department.
Through the chair, thank you. I just wanted to bring this primarily to your attention so you're aware, because it is such an issue, and it's an issue of concern for every community in Massachusetts, but Senator Moore's office had sent us an email back in the late fall from November notifying us that the state had announced a new youth opioid prevention grant application process, and that, it's a competitive process to apply for grants to incorporate in the curriculum, hopefully at your elementary school level, which is what the superintendent and the school committee has decided to do, to incorporate a curriculum, whether in the form of a speaker or education to the very young students in the elementary level, to work with them and their parents for opioid prevention. So this is a meeting, we convened a meeting with the police chief, the fire chief, the director of public health, myself, and Ed Kaczynowicz to talk about how we could help support an application to the state for this, to show that we had a lot of support for this, even though it's taking place at the school department. And the school superintendent was wonderful, she and her team were very excited about the opportunity. They have a very good infrastructure in place to be able to incorporate this, because they already do a lot of prevention education for their students, generally at a middle school and up level, so this is an opportunity to get at some of the younger children. The board of health voted to support this, and this took place in between your meeting schedule, so I did send a letter of support on behalf of town administration. The police chief sent a letter of support, and we're coming to ask for a letter of support. The application was submitted by the school department, but it's not too late to send any letters of support to show them that the board would like to do this. It's nothing that the board needs to vote on, because you're not the ones actually applying or accepting the grant fund, so it was purely, I wanted to make you aware of what is going on, and, you know, what a great effort it is of a larger group. We reached out to Fallon, and Fallon's has been wonderful, they've put us in touch with some people at Fallon that could potentially give some resources for this as well, so it really is going to involve a lot of stakeholders for, obviously, a very important issue.
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, it's ironic that this is on the agenda tonight. They haven't spoken to this in the past, but when the district's attorney, Joe Early's Central Mass Opioid Task Force was formed, I want to say, almost three years ago now, the district's attorney asked me to serve on that committee, and I have been a member of the Central Mass Opioid Task Force now since its inception. Specifically, I serve on the Education and Awareness Subcommittee, and we're still in crisis mode. We're still in crisis mode for this opioid epidemic, and education and awareness is key. I mean, we, you know, the legislature, the DAs, the sheriffs, everyone's working together to address this, but the reality is, we have to start young, schoolchildren. This opioid crisis, this opioid epidemic doesn't discriminate, you know, because we're from a suburb and great schools, this, trust me, you know, parents are becoming aware that their children are having issues that they had no idea. I congratulate the Auburn Police Department and the school committee, I mean, the school department for working so closely. I'm aware of the work that they're already doing, they've brought in great speakers, but I would ask my fellow board members to send a strong letter of support, because, like I said, we're still in crisis mode, and education and awareness will be key, and it will be not today or tomorrow, but we'll keep working at it, and hopefully we'll get a handle on this and save some lives.
Well said, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Is there any other comments? Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, I vote to send a letter with a copy to both Senator Moore and Representative Frost, expressing our support for the school department's request for grants through the youth opioid prevention program.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, have you got that, Sharon?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Goodrich?
While we're still on this, on the discussion, so, I should have stated this, my apologies for being a few minutes late, but the DA has sponsored, the Central Mass Opioid Task Force has sponsored community forums throughout Worcester County, and there is one being held now, you know, I actually manned the hidden-in-plane sight table prior to the panel discussions, but there was a opioid task force community forum tonight in Worcester, and I was at that, so my apologies for being a few minutes late.
Well, thank you, we're definitely well worth your time to be there, and your tottingness is well, well taken care of, that it's something that, yeah, we all should be looking forward to, and it's, well, it's an education for all of us, those of us that are not that well involved in it, it's probably something we should be paying a lot more close attention to. And I guess, Mrs. Goodrich, I'm going to ask you, it was in Worcester tonight, are there any other forums coming up in the near future that, you know, maybe you can give us an idea on, I think this is something that's definitely most important to everybody.
Many, many of the communities have reached out to the DA, so there isn't one, because we... we had, we've had one a month the last five months, we anticipate scheduling a couple more, but although we're dealing with an opioid crisis right now, we also have to start looking at the legalization of marijuana, which will tie into the whole thing. So I will update you on the next scheduled Worcester County forum at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. So the motion has been made and seconded to send a letter along. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And, let's see. We have no tabled items for tonight, we have no items from the board members, there's no public comment tonight, and, yes...
Can I just add one thing, it's not on the agenda, but today, and they celebrate it on the 9th for the last several years, but today is National Law Enforcement Recognition Day, and so, especially with the year, boy, that we, that our own police department has had, you know, they rose to the occasion after such a tragedy, we're so professional, they took care of the community, rather than, you know, we tried to reach out to them and take care of them, and they were overwhelmingly took care of us and the community. So on National Law Enforcement Recognition Day, I'd like us to say thank you to our Auburn Police Department.
Absolutely.
Well done, thank you. And I do say thank you myself, thank you for that. Ms. Jacobson, have you got anything else that you want to bring forward tonight?
The only thing I've mentioned, and at some point we'll ask to have her come in and meet you, but we did, as I notified the board and let the public know, that we have hired a new senior center, elder affairs director, Jean Luet, and she will be starting two weeks from today, on January 23rd. So at the appropriate time, we'll make sure that we bring her in to introduce you to her, and we're very excited to have her on board. She's currently a council and aging director in another community, and has been in a couple of similar positions in council and aging. She's got some great ideas, very dynamic thinking, and I think she's going to be a very good fit.
Great.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, we look forward to that. If there's nothing else, we have minutes from October 11, 2016, and October 18, 2016. Is there any errors, omissions, comments, corrections? Being none, I'll accept them as presented, and with a thank you to Sharon for putting them together for us. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Welcome to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.